Mr. Regler, meeting the City Council has incorporated the added notice of 2014, which is filed in City Council's office, and posted on the bulletin board of December 27, 2013. Consent of Starlight that all groups should be involved implies with provision to the open public view as well for judges. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Sedanian. Councilman Goldman.
Here.
Councilman Maza.
Yep.
President Grover.
Here. Eight members present at this time of night, so please rise as Councilman Paul Ford will lead us to prayer.
Almighty God, have you legislated for our community a strong sense of justice and fair play in the remaining court of the district. Above all, may we seek out your holy will. Give us the strength to follow it, and promise to all you who serve you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the free, public, and righteous states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Cheerleaders, you did a great job there.
Thank you.
All right, before we open the meeting to public speak, I'm going to ask my colleague, Councilwoman, I know it's Patricia Perkins-Augustine, to come forward. I think you have some presentations tonight. I know we took the pictures here, now we're going to...
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And it gives me great pleasure to showcase to the city of Elizabeth the Eastwick Saints Lady. They can mention cheer team, and they make their way onto Florida's Disney World to represent not only the city of Elizabeth, but the city of Elizabeth and Pop Warner as the finalists in the cheerleading competition. Before going any further, I would like to have my colleague, Sister Nicole Marks, Councilwoman Carlos Torres, who I think about two years ago had his football men come up. They were what, second? What's, what country? Regional, okay. Regional champs, and they were two games away of what the ladies have accomplished. And I want to point out that the ladies are breaking history here in the city of Elizabeth. And I am so happy and proud of you ladies for what you have accomplished. You have broken through that glass ceiling for us here in Elizabeth. I believe this is the first team that is going to be representing the city of Elizabeth in Pop Warner history. To give my compliments, I apologize for being correct here, but I don't think I'm mistaken. And we have our council president who also supports sports endeavors, especially the non-profit sports endeavors, the organized sports programs throughout the city of Elizabeth. They are so vital in teaching our youth leadership, what it means to be sportsmanship, what it means to work together on a team. Those type of values and those type of skills that you learn at this stage will follow you for the rest of your life. So I want to first thank the organization, the parents. We thank you, thank you, thank you so much, because we all know what it means to have our parents and fathers organize sports. Myself, Councilman Grover, Councilman Torres, we have children at school age, and they're involved in organized sports. We know the sacrifice that the parents are making, that the grandparents and the aunts and the uncles and the cousins make on behalf of these children. So I want to say, let's hear the parents, the grandparents. There's so much more I can say, but I'm not going to yield to my colleague from the first floor. And after that, we're going to hand out the commendations for our ladies. Councilman Torres.
Thank you. My colleague said it all. I just want to congratulate you girls. As president of another organization, I know how hard it is. I know the coaches and then Sean, can you please move over here? As a former president, I know how hard it is to reach this level. I actually took the cheer coaching class for five hours, so I know what the coaches go through. But I want to speak to the girls right now. All of our days at practice, the long hours, coaches screaming at you, if you stay focused, and you believe in your coaches, and you believe in yourself, this is the end. So not only did you represent, you represented the city well. Give it a round of applause for yourself. And I speak to the coaches and the president. I know when you guys decided to start the Saints two years, this is unheard. Two years in the league, and you guys are already going to Disney. There's some organizations that have been in the league for 20 years and never made it this far. So I want to congratulate you guys. I know Disney is always in the back of our minds, but I know this is not the reason why they got into this. They wanted to show the boys and girls the fundamentals and basics of football and cheer. But this is the icing on the cake. So congratulations again, Sean. Let you say a couple of words, and you can introduce your coaches.
Give yourselves a round of applause. This is, this is a great honor, and I would like to thank all the councilmen and councilwomen for having us here tonight. What these girls did is remarkable. I mean, like you said, in the city of Elizabeth, we always say, oh, we're going to make it to Florida, or we're going to go to Florida, and it never happens. And now you guys put the stamp on Elizabeth, and I'm very proud of you presidents. It's hard being president. It's hard dealing with cheer coaches that's all women. But at the end of the day, it's worth it. When you stand up here, you look at all these kids, and they're smiling, and the parents is here smiling, and we having celebration for something that you accomplished, it's all worth it. It's all worth it. Like Carlos said, this organization was started last year, and a lot of people can't believe it. Within two years, the cheer of football have brought in 10 trophies, which is remarkable for the kids in the city of Elizabeth to accomplish something like that. So again, this is a reflection of the parents. This is a reflection of any mentor in Elizabeth that sees a kid on the corner and say, hey, get off the corner. Go join the team. Go do your homework. If everybody works together, then we could get our city back the way it's supposed to be. I'd like to personally thank my board. I'd like to personally thank all of my coaches. And I want to bring up my cheer director right now, Ms. Quanisha Pratt. Hey, I know you want to talk. Yes, you do. Come on. Hey, before she even talks, can I get the rest of the coaches to come up here too? Come on up. Come on up. Come on, guys. Come on, Sean. All right, ladies and gentlemen, please give Quanisha a round of applause.
I want to say thanks to the parents so much. Without you guys, you know, we couldn't do this. The coaches said it's amazing. You work hard. Everybody knows how I feel about the girls. I love them tremendously. I would do anything for these little girls. They work very hard every day. You girls work very hard, and I look forward to seeing you guys in Disney. Keep on doing what you need to do. You know how your parents start with schoolwork. Do your schoolwork. Do what you need to do at home, so we can bring home the national championship.
One, two.
One, two.
I'm going to call out names of the cheerleaders, and I'm going to ask you all just to come up as your names crawl and present the commendations. Ania McClain Hudson. Ania? Diana Vega? Mara Kenner? Juanice Lainer? Janasia Robb? Nakia Porter? Ayana Jones? Anaya Williams? Ayesha Sykes? Katie Robinson? Tida Hinton? Shonda Hicks? Ashana Hicks? Natalia Harris? Deja Harrison? Well, that didn't work. Tahia Brinkley? We also have Madeline Bravo down here. On behalf of the City Council of the city of Elizabeth, I want to congratulate the young ladies for their achievement. I want to congratulate the parents, the coaches, and all the organization. But most important, remember this: We will only commend you or recognize you if you do something positive. If you don't do something positive, we don't want you in this room. So make sure you continue to do things positive. Thank you.
I just want to end it. All the football coaches, these girls do a remarkable job cheering for your team each and every week. Now is the time for you and all your, the guys, all the boys, to cheer for them. You're basically their cheerleaders. So you girls, go out there and bring home that trophy. If you come home with the trophy, we're going to have a party at Mr. Goldman's house.
Thank you, councilwoman. Thank you, councilman. Thank you, ladies. Good luck in Disney, welcome. Okay, we'll take a two-minute recess if you want to leave, if you want to stay. We're going to start the meeting. Any member of the audience wishing to address City Council at this time? Any member of the audience wishing to address City Council on any matter, please come forward. It's the public speaking portion of the meeting. Please, please clear the center aisle, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
Patricia Evans-Law, formerly of Miami, Latin College Nation, Turkey. I would like to know whether councilmembers would be contributing to the girls' performance.
Don't bother.
Would councilmembers be contributing to the ladies' trips to Disney?
I, I, I don't mind that. My suggestion is to put a solicitation letter, give it to the city clerk, and we'll try to do something, okay?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. We can't do it as a company body, on the personal. Anyone else wishing to address City Council, please come forward, state your name for the record. Come on, man. I'm clerk, make sure it copies. Is there an address where you sent the donation? Mrs. President, we didn't hear him put it once.
Girls that come to...
We want to make donations to the cheerleaders. Any other member of the audience wishing to address City Council? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Will now move on to public speak. Public carryers.
Ordinance number 4480. Authorize the adoption of a super utility bond ordinance in the amount not to exceed $5,400,000 to finance the city's capital assessment in respect of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties.
Heard a reading, ordinance number 4480. Any member of the order is wishing to address City Council on ordinance number 4480. See, and none, I'll close that portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4507. Authorize the adoption of a capital ordinance in the amount of $450,000 for the demolition of the Polish home located at 607-627 Pulaski Street.
Heard a reading, ordinance number 4507. Anyone wishing to address City Council on ordinance number 4507? See, and none, I'll close that portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4508. Authorize the adoption of a capital ordinance in the amount of $750,000 for the purchase of emergency generators for the Peters Town Community Center and Stephen Sampson Senior Center.
Heard a reading, ordinance 4508. Anyone from the audience wishing to address City Council on 4508? See, and none, I'll close that portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4509. Authorize the adoption of a bond ordinance in the amount of $2,500,000 with a down payment of $125,000 for the renovation of the Mickey Walker Center and the purchase of a natural gas emergency generator to power the entire building.
Heard a reading of the ordinance number 4... Hold on a second. They left a scarf on that second row. I could see it from here. Second row. Miss, there's something right here. Second row, girl. Over here, second. On the... Hey. Thought that was it. Sorry. Heard a reading, ordinance 4509. Is there any member of the audience wishing to address City Council on ordinance number 4509? See, and none, I'll close that portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4510. Authorize the adoption of a bond ordinance in the amount of $5,500,000 for the cost of engineering and construction of the Trumbull Street flood control project.
Heard a reading, ordinance number 4510. Any member of the audience wishing to address City Council on ordinance number 4510? See, and none, I'll close that portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4511. Author... Okay. Ordinance number 4511, 4512, 4513, 4514. Authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking spaces located at 542 Fulton, 1019 Olive Street, 18 South 7th Street, and 426 South Fifth Street.
Heard a reading, ordinance 4511, 4512, 4513, and 4514. Any member of the audience wishing to address City Council on these four ordinance? See, and none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. The Midtown Improvement, the Midtown Special Improvement District fiscal year 2014 budget in the amount of $325,320. Is there any member of the audience wishing to address City Council on the Midtown Elizabeth Special Improvement District budget? See, and none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Sorry. Fiscal year 2015 municipal budget in the amount of $232,8211 made sense. Fiscal year 2015 super utility budget in the amount of $21,500,000. Fiscal year 2015 capital budget in the amount of $113,225,000. Anyone from the audience wishing to address City Council on these three 2015 fiscal year budgets? See, and none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Consent of my colleagues, who are the Spencer Reading, petitions, communications, and reports of city officers. We'll move on to ordinance on our first reading.
Ordinance number 4515. Amend chapter 8.80.20 and 8.80.30 of the code of the city of Elizabeth entitled vacant and foreclosing residential properties specifically to designate a third party to manage the records relating to vacant and foreclosing property registration.
Heard a reading, ordinance 4515. What is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be revoked, President?
Moved in second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Grover.
Aye. Eight ayes. Ordinance passes on first reading.
Ordinance number 4516. Amend chapter 15.4.40 of code of the city of Elizabeth entitled Buildings and Construction specifically to increase construction permit fees effective January 1, 2015.
Heard a reading, ordinance 4516. What is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be revoked, President?
Moved in second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Grover.
Aye. Eight ayes. Ordinance passes on first reading.
Ordinance numbers 4517, 4518, 4519, 4520, and 4521. Authorizing the establishment of personalized handicap parking spaces in front of the premises located at 326 Avenue Street, 131 Clark Place, 224 Ripley Place, 1081 William Street, and 964 De Hard Place.
Heard a reading, ordinance number 4517, 18, 19, 4520, and 4521. What is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be revoked, President?
Moved in second. Is there any comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Goldman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, wait, I'm sorry. We didn't get to one of the 45 times here.
We all five of you can't have our... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Grover.
Aye. Eight ayes. Ordinance passes on first reading. Public area of further consideration of four going ordinance shall take place at the City Council meeting to be held Tuesday, November 25, 2014, at 7:30 p.m.
Ordinance number 4522. Authorize the adoption of a supplemental bond ordinance in the amount of $1 million for the reconstruction of the firehouse for engine company number 6, 472 Catherine Street.
Heard a reading, ordinance 4522. What is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be revoked, President?
Moved in second. Councilman Goldman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I came here to size a bill. This one will be $1 million dollar bill spent. We would, we would doubt be able to sit there for a nice year there too. And I came pretty high, ecstatic that people were there at the passageway. So they could, thought reconstruction was, we build up, they would buy us. I want to thank each and every one of my colleagues who supported, and they also, I'd like to thank also the supporters for making this happen.
Anyone else? Councilman Maza.
Mr. President, I think this is money we'll spend, but at the same time, it would be nice if whatever amount of firemen we needed or able organizations should be implemented as soon as possible.
Thank you, councilman. Anyone else? Councilman Goldman, you did a great job in fighting for the people in that area, and obviously, we're all here to support the residents of Elizabeth. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Grover.
Aye. Eight ayes. Ordinance passes on first reading. Public area of further consideration of the four going ordinance shall take place at the City Hall Council meeting, City Council meeting to be held Tuesday, December 9, 2014, at 7:30 p.m. For now, we're going to move on to ordinances on final passage.
Ordinance number 4480. Authorize the adoption of super utility bond ordinance in the amount not to exceed $5,400,000 to finance the city's capital assessment in respect of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties.
Heard a reading, ordinance 4480. What is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be revoked, President?
Moved in second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Grover.
Aye. Ordinance passes on final.
Ordinance number 4507. Authorize the adoption of a capital ordinance in the amount of $450,000 for the demolition of the Polish home located at 607-627 Pulaski Street.
Heard a reading, ordinance 4507. What is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be revoked, President?
Moved in second. Any comments? Mr. President, Councilman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, once again, Mr. President, I ask for my colleagues' support. This is important. Ordinance of the second going Bayway session for the demolition of the Polish home. This will bring us one step closer to developing a recreational hill over there in the Bayway area, and so that our kids, our children can enjoy that wall and the new pool that we've been able to put up over there by the ancient ways. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good job, councilman. I know you're looking out for the kids. Proof was right here in front of us to see if we can build more recreational facilities, more places for kids to stay busy, and they're going to be bringing back trophies as opposed to getting themselves into trouble. So congratulations. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan, Councilman Goldman, Councilman Maza, President Grover.
Aye. Ordinance passes on final.
Ordinance number forty five oh eight, authorize the adoption of a capital ordinance in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of emergency generators for the Peters Town Community Center and Stephen Sampson Senior Center.
Heard a reading of ordinance four five oh eight. What is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be revoked, President?
They've been moved in second. Any comments? Oh, I'll comment for both of you guys. Great job, Councilman Goldman, Councilman Maza for bringing these, uh, generators to your recreational facilities and your wards. Hopefully, we'll never need to use them, and there's no future storms, but if they are, this will be ready. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine, Councilman Questa, Councilman Torres, Councilman Gonzalez, Councilwoman Keenan, Councilman Goldman, Councilman Maza, President Grover.
Aye. Eight ayes, ordinance passes on final.
Ordinance number forty five oh nine, authorize the adoption of a bond ordinance in the amount of two million five hundred thousand dollars with a down payment of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the renovation of the Mickey Walker Center and the purchase of a natural gas emergency generator to power the entire building.
Heard a reading of four five oh nine. What is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be revoked, President?
It's moved in second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine, Councilman Questa, Councilman Torres, Councilman Gonzalez, Councilwoman Keenan, Councilman Goldman, Councilman Maza, President Grover.
Aye. Ordinance passes on final.
Ordinance number forty five ten, authorize the adoption of a bond ordinance in the amount of five million five hundred thousand dollars for the cost of engineering and construction of the Trumbull Street Flood Control Project.
Heard a reading of ordinance four five oh zero. What is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be revoked, President?
It's moved in second. Any comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Goldman.
Mr. President, thank you so much. Uh, I'm honored that my colleague continued to support me on this ordinance because money in here, uh, this project is a special project, Mr. President, as you know, when Hurricane Sandy came through, that whole entire area that I'm in there was flooded out, uh, and a lot of people lost their, uh, their loans, and they especially sent General Church, uh, on, uh, sinking mad, lost everything, uh, just wiped out. Uh, and this project is going to prevent that from happening again. Also, as you know, we have a brand new firehouse just on a block away from there, and as all the flood, and a fire breaks out, it would go all the way down to Jersey, Jersey, to get up to Midtown. That's about her. So, this project, Mr. President, is going to cut that, uh, travel time almost to nothing to get back up to Midtown. So, I want to thank my colleagues who support this, uh, support me on this, on this order, uh, and this, another project will be wanting to go elsewhere. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine, Councilman Questa, Councilman Torres, Councilman Gonzalez, Councilwoman Keenan, Councilman Goldman, Councilman Maza, President Grover.
Aye. Eight ayes, ordinance passes on final.
Ordinance numbers forty five eleven, forty five twelve, forty five thirteen, and forty five fourteen, authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking spaces in front of the premises located at five forty-two Fulton Street, ten nineteen Olive Street, eighteen South Seventh Street, and four twenty-six South Fifth Street.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have heard the reading of ordinance four five eleven, four five twelve, four five thirteen, and four five fourteen. What is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be revoked, President?
It's moved in second. Is there any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine, Councilman Questa, Councilman Torres, Councilman Gonzalez, Councilwoman Keenan, Councilman Goldman, Councilman Maza, President Grover.
Aye. All ordinance has passed on final. Now, move on to the business.
Authorize an amendment to the fiscal year two thousand fifteen capital budget in the amount of one million dollars. Adopt the Midtown Elizabeth Special Improvement District Calendar Year two thousand fourteen budget in the amount of two hundred twenty-six thousand dollars.
Heard a reading of, uh, the resolutions. What is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be revoked, President?
They've been moved in second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine, Councilman Questa, Councilman Torres, Councilman Gonzalez, Councilwoman Keenan, Councilman Goldman, Councilman Maza, President Grover.
Aye. Resolution passed.
Introduce and approve fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget amendments to be read and full. The following constitutes the fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget amendments. Local tax for municipal purposes including reserve for uncollected taxes from one hundred forty-one million three hundred thirty-eight thousand two hundred ninety dollars ninety-five cents to one hundred forty million three hundred eighty-eight thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars eighty-seven cents. Total amount to be raised by taxes for support of municipal budget from one hundred forty-three million four hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars sixty-three cents to one hundred forty-two million five hundred forty thousand eighteen dollars fifty-five cents. Total general revenues from two hundred thirty-four million thirty-two thousand seventy-nine dollars sixteen cents to two hundred thirty-three million eighty-two thousand two hundred eleven dollars eight cents. Contributions to public employees retirement system from four million five hundred thousand dollars to three million eight hundred thousand dollars. Contributions to police and firemen's retirement system from fourteen million five hundred thousand dollars to fourteen million three hundred thousand dollars. Total deferred charges and statutory expenditures municipal within caps from twenty-three million two hundred fifty-four thousand dollars to twenty-two million three hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Total general appropriations for municipal purposes within caps from one hundred ninety-two million three hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred three dollars to one hundred ninety-one million four hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred three dollars. Subtotal general appropriations from two hundred twenty-one million nine hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars fifty-two cents to two hundred twenty-one million forty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars fifty-two cents. Reserve for uncollected taxes from twelve million eighty-eight thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars sixty-four cents to twelve million thirty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars fifty-six cents. Total general appropriations from two hundred thirty-four million thirty-two thousand seventy-nine dollars sixteen cents to two hundred thirty-three million eighty-two thousand two hundred eleven dollars eight cents. Total deferred charges from twenty-four million fifty-four thousand dollars to twenty-three million one hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Reserve for uncollected taxes from twelve million eighty-eight thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars sixty-four cents to twelve million thirty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars fifty-six cents. Total general appropriations from two hundred thirty-four million thirty-two thousand seventy-nine dollars sixteen cents to two hundred thirty-three million eighty-two thousand two hundred eleven dollars eight cents. Adopt the fiscal year two thousand fifteen municipal budget in the amount of two hundred thirty-three million eighty-two thousand two hundred eleven dollars eight cents. Fiscal year two thousand fifteen sewer utility budget in the amount of twenty-one million five hundred thousand dollars and capital budget in the amount of one hundred thirteen million two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Authorize the award of contract to Lewis Horvato Landscaping in Coldbrook, New York for the purchase of two hundred honeyed locusts and pin oak trees to be planted throughout the city and residential areas under the Union County Co-op at a total cost of thirty-five thousand nine hundred dollars. Authorize the award of contract to Arconic Systems LLC, Marlton, New Jersey, for the maintenance and quarterly license for police computer assistant records management and dispatch system software, ex-mobile clients, and ex-cat data export for the period October one, two thousand fourteen through December ten, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of twenty-two thousand three hundred thirteen dollars twenty-five cents. Authorize the proper city officials to commence with the competitive contract process for the procurement of the furnishing and delivery of electronic credit card debit card payment service for municipal court bonds. Authorize the award of a contract to Mazer Consulting, PA, Red Bank, New Jersey, to provide professional engineering services for the winterization and reopening of the Mickey Walker Spray Par facility in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred fifty dollars. Authorize the award of contract to Fidelity and Deposit Company of Maryland, a member of the Sewer Financial Services Group, Schaumburg, Illinois, for the renewal of a policy of insurance covering the Fidelity Blanket Bond for public employees for the period January one, two thousand fifteen to January one, two thousand sixteen, at a cost of three thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars fourteen cents.
Heard a reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be revoked, President?
Moved in second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine, Councilman Questa, Councilman Torres, Councilman Gonzalez, Councilwoman Keenan, Councilman Goldman, Councilman Maza, President Grover.
Aye. All resolution passed.
Authorize the award of a contract to Guarding State Office Systems, Piscataway, New Jersey, for the purchase of a electric but one oh two ticket trays for the Elizabeth Municipal Court at a cost of thirty-five thousand eight hundred nine dollars fourteen cents. Authorize the award of contract to General Sales Administration, trading as Major Police Supply, Campbell, New Jersey, for the maintenance of fixed automatic license plate recognition camera system for the Department of Police for the period October twenty, two thousand fourteen through June thirty, two thousand fifteen, at a cost of not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Authorize the award of a contract to New Jersey Overhead Door, Analefen, New Jersey, under the Union County Cooperative Purchasing Contract for the purchase of door and gate system services for various departments for the period October twenty-one, two thousand fourteen through July thirty-one, two thousand sixteen, at a cost not to exceed one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Authorize the participation in the Peppel and permit utilization of their award to allocate Lucin USA Inc. through their distributor, RFP Solutions Inc., for the purchase of telephone equipment, hardware, and software for City Hall, police and fire departments, and senior centers, in the total amount of six hundred ninety-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars forty cents. Authorize the award of a contract to Weld and Materials, Inc., Westville, New Jersey, under the Union County Cooperative Purchasing Contract for the purchase of ready-mixed concrete for the Department of Public Works for the period October twenty-nine, two thousand fourteen through October twenty-eight, two thousand sixteen, in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Amend the resolution adopted January twenty-eight, two thousand fourteen, awarding a contract to Triangle Communications for the purchase of computer parts for various vehicles not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, specifically to purchase communications equipment at an additional cost of fifty thousand dollars. Authorize the award of a contract to Apple Computer, Inc., Austin, Texas, for the purchase of one MacBook Pro computer and accessories at a cost of two thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars. Authorize the award of a contract to the law firm Goldenberg Mac Luray Men's Fetter Bonchey Gill for legal representation on INRIN tax foreclosures for the period November twenty-seven, two thousand fourteen through November twenty-six, two thousand fifteen, at a rate of five hundred dollars per tax sale certificate, plus costs not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, and contested foreclosures will be billed at one hundred fifty dollars per hour plus costs. Authorize proper city officials to execute the redevelopment agreement with the redevelopers for the East Rand Associates Urban Renewal Entity LLC, Trumbull Street Supermarket Project, located at A sixty-five eleven Simpson Street, formerly known as the New Jersey Transit Bus Garage. Amend the resolution adopted October twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, authorizing execution of an agreement for community development block grant funding for year two thousand thirteen with nonprofit agencies specifically to award additional funds to the Office of Relocation in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Amend the resolution adopted January thirteen, two thousand thirteen, authorizing the extension of the old District Trust Community Development Block Grant Agreement specifically to extend the contract to December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. Establish liens for the removal and disposal of debris on properties listed on Schedule A on file in the City Clerk's office in the total amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars ninety-three cents.
Heard a reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Will the resolution be revoked, President?
It's moved in second. Any comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Goldman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make comments on the redevelopment of the, uh, one of East Rand and that area. Yes, I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. President, as you know, uh, this property had been vacant for a long time, undeveloped, underused, uh, and it's high time that we, uh, make some room in this, on this property, uh, with super popular retail. I can foresee, uh, in the near future, it's going to be a gateway to the whole, Jersey Island Hall, uh, and cleaning up this area is, is all just a start. Uh, and over the next year or two, you're going to see big change. I don't know where we have a supermarket that will be able to have job, uh, people be able to go shopping, provide food, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and often, I know you have the heart for, uh, for his wife, who was, uh, uh, councilman there, uh, who was there when he had one the first week, but we also will be something in Midtown that we want to travel two and a half miles from East Rand, uh, to the stop shop at North Avenue, just to go buy, uh, a lot of supermarkets. So, this is just one step, uh, in the right direction, uh, have our citizens in that area, hopefully, in that area, uh, to stop by at a supermarket to, uh, buy groceries. Thank you, Mr. President. I hope all of you want to support this resolution, uh, and, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Just hold on, as you wish.
Yes, also.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine, Councilman Questa, Councilman Torres, Councilman Gonzalez, Councilwoman Keenan, Councilman Goldman, Councilman Maza, President Grover.
Aye. All the resolution passed.
Authorize the award of a contract to Propolis Services, Inc., Ringwood, New Jersey, for the combined sewer overflow netting facilities, O twenty-nine and O thirty-four chamber hatch repairs, at a cost of seventy-one thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars. Authorize proper city officials to execute all appropriate documents for the two thousand fourteen Assistance Firefighters Program grant in an amount not to exceed two million dollars, with matching funds equal to twenty percent of the total project cost to update and modernize the self-contained breathing apparatus equipment and pass devices and replace the fill station at Fire Headquarters. Establish handicap parking spaces in front of the premises located at thirty-four H. Jersey Street, nineteen Rankin Street, three twenty-six Pine Street, one forty-nine Court Street, forty-four Prospect Street, eighteen Lions Place, and three thirty-five South Pearl Street. Delete the following handicap parking spaces from in front of the premises located at twenty-two Lions Place, nineteen Lions Place, and six thirty-two Franklin Street. Pay utility bills.
You heard a reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Will the resolution be revoked, President?
Moved in second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine, Councilman Questa, Councilman Torres, Councilman Gonzalez, Councilwoman Keenan, Councilman Goldman, Councilman Maza, President Grover.
Aye. My resolution should pass. At this time, I just wanted to congratulate all the board council members on their reelection. Um, I also want to congratulate Kevin Canyer sitting in the back on his, uh, third board council electorally position. Um, kind of, uh, obviously, the voters of your warrants, appreciate all you guys do for them, and they put you back in office, so congratulations. Commendations. Uh, I read out all those names already for the young ladies that were here earlier. I'd also want to, uh, state that the Eastwood Ladies Saints Cheerleaders won first place in the North Jersey competition, they won first place in the Garden State Competition, and they won first place in the regional competition. And because of those accomplishments, the Eastwood Ladies Saints Cheerleaders are going to compete at the national competition in, uh, Walt Disney World, Florida. So, uh, they were all here earlier. For those of you who are at home watching, uh, let's give them, uh, a lot of luck, and, uh, hopefully, their jersey results in a positive, um, positive report. There any other commendations?
Oh, yes, I have one, Mr. President. For Mr. James Lee, who's going to be retiring. Did we do that again? Okay, sorry.
Beat you to it.
Okay. Okay.
We got another one. Any other commendations? Uh, memorials, we have Catherine King Nightbro. One's one hand in here, uh, one of the fathers, uh, father of our city, uh, drivers who passed away, Mr. Santos, I've got a little his first name, I'll put it in here. Mr. President?
Yes, sir. I was there somebody else. Luis Gustavo Radines Garcia.
Gustavo.
Gustavo Radines. R.I.P. I guess. Garcia. G.A.R.C.I.A.
Any one else? Any one else? All right, so I saw it. Yeah, I wanted to--